Welcome.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson is absent, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remarks by Councilmember Danny Bagley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Please be seated.
First, I'd like to have a... There was a security officer that worked for over 20 years in the building here. John Nava, he was 55 years old. And John was somebody that would greet you when you entered the garage. When you would start your day and he would have a smile on his face and he would give you a word or two of encouragement. And he was a good family man. He passed away suddenly of a heart attack. And he's going to be deeply missed, so I'd like to offer my condolences to everybody in this building and in the city and the county that knew John, and condolences to his family because he was the guy with the smile on his face and loved his job protecting and serving our community. So if there's one thing we can take from John, it's be kind to others. And that smile that you give somebody makes a difference. That's what John did every day. Secondly, we had our neighborhood cleanups in the city going on last weekend and coming up here. In my district, we had Dolman Field Club, Jocelyn, and Dundee Memorial Park. And then coming up, we got Exorbin Elmwood and paddock. So I'd like to thank the volunteers that spend time keeping our city clean and invest in their time to keep our neighborhoods safe and clean. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you being here this afternoon and look forward to your input on our many items we have on the agenda today. Before we get started, I do want to just recognize some folks that are here visiting Omaha and visiting City Hall today. It's the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Institute, together with the University of Nebraska at Omaha. They just had a chance to talk with Councilmember Palermo. It's something I usually do, but I noticed he was doing it and got a lot more laughs than I did. So you must have got an upgrade today. Thanks for being here and thanks for your interest in the city government.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Haven located southwest of 216th and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Bradley Haig, 10836 Old Mill Road. TD2 Engineering Consulting Engineers for the project here on behalf of the applicant and able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items seven through 10 can be considered together for Windgate Ranch Replat 1 located northwest of Turner and 12th and Hickory Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and eight, ordinances to rezone this property from DR District and R3 District to DR District and R3 District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seven, eight, nine, and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. I'll make myself available. Any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 11 through 14 can be considered together for Warhorse Casino located at 6303 Q Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Items 12 through 14, resolutions to approve major amendments to special use permits to allow outdoor and indoor entertainment and for an area over 10 acres in size in the GI District.
Public hearing and vote on items 11, 12, 13, and 14 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items 15 through 19 can be considered together for Avenue 1 Replat 2 located southeast of 188 and Burke Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 15 and 16, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District, DR District, and MU District to DR District and MU District. Item 17, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement. Item 18, a resolution to approve a final plat. Item 19, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. I'll make myself available for any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 20, to consider a class D liquor license for Isla Del Mar Restaurant located at 2502 South 133rd Plaza, Suite 105.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. I believe we have our proponent by Zoom, Ismael Gonzalez. Try to get you off mute here in a second. All right, try that.
Okay. I'm here. Hi, this is Ismael Gonzalez.
And your address, please?
Yes, the address is 2502 South 133rd Street Plaza, Suite 105, Omaha, Nebraska, 68147.
Great, thank you. I'm just here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 21, to consider a class D liquor license for Suave Roo Boutique located at 9949 Reddick Circle.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please. We do usually require proponents to be here, but I'll check for any opponents at this time. Before I close public hearing, I'll see if there's any questions from the council members.
Wait, do we need it next week? Yes, layover for one week.
Okay.
So motion for a one-week layover in a second. And to continue public hearing, roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 22, to consider a liquor license addition application for Yoshi Tomo located at 6009 Maple Street to add a basement area known as 6011 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 22 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Hendrickson. Get you off mute here in a second. Go ahead.
This is Jay Hendrickson, representing Yoshi Tomo, 6009 Maple and 6011 Maple Street, Omaha, 68104.
Great, thank you. And we just approved an expansion at this location last week, but this must also include the basement area?
Yes, I believe the basement was not included on the floor plan by mistake, but we're here to amend that.
Great. And what's intended to go down there?
Just storage.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Any other proponents on number 22? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? All second. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 23, a resolution to request the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission require Throwback Arcade Lounge located at 1402 Howard Street to submit a formal application.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. First, we'll hear from proponents.
Good afternoon. William McGinn, Law Firm of McGinn, Springer, and Nate, here with the owner of Throwback. Could you say your name for the record?
Yes, Brianna Pham Carr.
And we are proponents of the bill and just have, I wonder if there's any questions. What's that? What's that?
Yeah, I believe you'd want to be an opponent to the form.
Didn't I say opponent? It's been a long day.
That's why I was asking you. Yeah, no problem. I was asking the clerk for clarification on that. So this is a resolution that would require a formal application, formal long form for your renewal. So I presume we'll hear from the city first as probably the proponent, then we'll call you back up.
Your turn.
Good afternoon, members of the council. This long-form request is brought to you at the request of the City Council Law Committee. It seeks to have the establishment known as the Throwback Arcade Lounge submit a formal long-form application for renewal of their license to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, which would then subsequently be forwarded to the city council as a local recommending body for a recommendable of approval or denial on the license when it comes back.
And Ryan, for the record, your name?
Ryan Weason, Assistant City Attorney. My apologies.
Thank you.
The hearing today is not whether or not the license establishment remains qualified to hold a license. The hearing today is only whether or not it's the purpose to determine whether there's enough evidence, whether there have been enough information or complaints that have arisen from the operations of the establishment to require them to go through the formal renewal process again. There have been several tavern reports issued over the past two years. I'll just briefly summarize them. Beginning on February 5th, 2021, a tavern report was issued for officers were dispatched to fight disturbance and found a patron who was unconscious and passed out in the entryway of the establishment near vomit. That individual was then sent to the hospital for treatment. On February 21st, 2021, officers were dispatched to the Throwback Arcade Lounge for a disturbance. They encountered delayed entry and interference into the establishment by staff and were able to observe numerous health department COVID violations. On February 28th, 2021, officers were dispatched for a large disturbance or fight consisting of approximately 30 to 40 people. One woman was punched in the face and observed by officers to be bleeding. And again, they encountered delayed entry interference into the establishment by the establishment staff and security. On March 12th, 2021, officers were again dispatched to a large disturbance and fight. They observed multiple individuals leaving the premises with containers and again experienced delayed entry into the establishment interference by staff. Upon the officers' ultimate entry into the establishment, they did observe an odor of marijuana emanating throughout the establishment. On April 4th, 2021, the tavern report indicates that officers were again dispatched to the Throwback Arcade Lounge for a large fight disturbance. They observed one security guard forcefully body slam a patron to the ground while trying to control the situation. Another tavern report was generated on April 12th, 2021. Where officers were dispatched to a disturbance. Patron returned to the business after not being allowed to leave with a drink in his hand and subsequently broke two glass doors. An additional tavern report was generated on October 2nd, 2021 for another large fight disturbance that took place. On October 9th, 2021, a tavern report was generated that indicates a disturbance again on or the property or the adjacent licensed premises and a theft of property at the licensed premises. On October 17th, 2021, officers observed patrons of the establishment illegally parking in the area. And later in that evening, there was a large fight disturbance that resulted in an assault on an off-duty officer who was working security at the time. On March 20th, 2022, another tavern report was generated. The report indicates another large fight disturbance, illegal patron parking, and again delayed entry by staff of law enforcement officers into the establishment. The large fight disturbance also involved an individual who was attempting to tow vehicles who were illegally parked on private property according to the police reports and neighborhood complaints. Those individuals, several individuals from Throwback Lounge exited the lounge, went to the parking lot and harassed damaged property and interfered with the individual attempting to tow the vehicle. Exhibit 11, which is marked in your packet, contains complaints from two neighboring property owners detailing attempts by those neighboring property owners to work with the licensed premises managers and owners to address the illegal parking issues and to address trash and other sanitary conditions on or about the licensed premises, but to no avail. An additional tavern report was generated on July 23rd, 2022. Again, the tavern report indicates that there was a large fight disturbance on or about the adjacent licensed premises. The most recent tavern, excuse me. An additional tavern report was generated on September 24th, 2022, which again details allegations of a disturbance on the licensed premises or the adjacent property. Finally, the most recent tavern report was generated on October 16th, 2022, which again details a fight disturbance that occurred on or near the licensed premises. The last item that's been marked as an exhibit in your packet that has been presented to the council date is Exhibit 15. It contains two photographs from a neighboring property owner that allegedly show two patrons from the Throwback Lounge which exited the premises and were urinating in the private stairwell of this neighboring property owner's property. Again, showing the unsanitary nature of the establishment and a lack of control over those individuals visiting the premises. These tavern reports and complaints from the neighbors detail a pattern of disturbances resulting from the ongoing liquor establishment of the Throwback Arcade Lounge. Again, the question before the council today is not to determine whether or not the managers and owners of the Throwback Arcade Lounge are sufficiently qualified to have a liquor license. The only question today is whether or not there's enough information or evidence in these tavern reports and complaints that have been presented to you to require a formal hearing. In the event that the council does vote to approve the long-form demand to Liquor Control Commission, the commission should require Throwback Arcade Lounge to submit a new formal long-form application that would then be referred back to the city council for its recommendation where it would trigger the full formal due process evidence or hearing that the council has gone through a couple of times before with other liquor licenses, where the council could explore these allegations and this evidence more thoroughly. I can be available for any questions should the council desire.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 23? Seeing none, any opponents?
Once again, William McGinn, opponent for the resolution.
And your address, too?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Address, too?
Oh, 20 North 16th Street, Council House, 5151. The, many of the police, the police contacts that took place were after a particular type of party that was hosted at the Throwback Lounge. They've had similar issues with other bars in the area. And those type of events have basically stopped to where they're not having those special events that led to those kind of issues. So as you can see, those occurred in 2021, yet a lot of the large fights basically have stopped in 2022 and will continue to, they'll continue to make sure that that doesn't happen. Throwback Lounge has also employed off-duty Omaha police officers since then to keep some of this security issues at bay and improve that situation. A lot of the issues that have come up are things that happened two and three blocks. The tow truck driver incidents, for instance. That was a car that was parked a couple of blocks down the street and somebody just said they were at the Throwback. Well, they could have been at the Throwback, they could have been at several other places. So while they're certainly concerned there, it looks like there is a lot of the, a lot of the calls are based on people making assumptions and just because they have to be in the area, but not necessarily there. Regardless, it's my client's position that the, that these problems can be solved or are being solved by the additional security that the Throwback Lounge is employing. And they are certainly willing to talk to neighbors. The lack of communication has been, has been experienced by my client, too, with regards to putting a gate in where the neighboring building was making a complaint, that type of thing, and, and helping out with the cost of that. But a lot of these fights and disturbances have been from outside patrons trying to come in, that sort of thing. But regardless, what the Throwback Lounge is doing with the additional security is trying to put a stop or, or get that under control.
Okay, then just here for questions?
Okay, I didn't, do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So on the Law Committee that I sit with, Councilmembers Melton, who's the chair, and Councilmember Palermo. They were before the Law Committee in April of 2021. And this is a stack of the reports that we got from the Omaha Police Department on, I mean, if everybody listened to what attorney Ryan Weason said, if you're a patron down in the Old Market area, would you feel safe down there with all these reports that have happened? When there's large fight disturbances in this area or in the tavern or outside it, and police are responding using those resources to go help get that under control? And I've read all these reports in the years and in the few months I've been on the council, and it's disturbing. I wouldn't want my family members to go there in spite of the efforts that have been made with security. It hasn't solved the problem. And people in the Old Market area that are either living down there or have businesses down there, I obviously and everybody up here wants you to succeed, wants everyone to succeed and be, have great business, people enjoying themselves. But when we get to the point where you have Omaha police officers off-duty that are trying to do their jobs, Omaha police respond, and sometimes in the past, they haven't been able to enter the place, they've been resisted to get in. When people's physical being is threatened because of this establishment, there's a problem. And that's right in my district. And I've heard from those neighbors loud and clear what Ryan articulated earlier on their safety, the public safety. I wouldn't want to go into that establishment right now because of that. And I hate to say that about anywhere in the city of Omaha, that I wouldn't feel safe. And no citizen in this city should have that feeling if they're not even going to that, to the Throwback. If they're going down the Old Market and they're walking to go somewhere to a restaurant or to visit a friend, these fights going on are disturbing to me. So I, I'm to the point where we've been patient on the Law Committee. And my position is that this gets recommended to Lincoln to do what they have to do and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. McGinn?
Yes.
Could you and your client step back up?
Sure.
Could you tell me, who is, who is present, who is actually running the bar? Who's the, who's managing the bar at this current time?
Who is the onsite manager who's actually doing that?
We have Taylor Bass, who is very recent.
Your name and address for the record, too?
Oh, Brianna Pham Carr, 1402 Howard Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102.
Continue.
We have also Richie Nataste, so we have two acting managers in the bars.
And how long have they worked there?
Taylor is kinda new. Richie's been there for quite some time, a year and a half would be my guess, maybe a year.
And when did you begin hiring off-duty Omaha police officers for security?
After we met with the police department. So a lot of these tavern reports happened prior to that meeting. We sat down with the police department. They had recommendations for us, change music, you know, up your security staff, hire off-duty police officers. They had a lot of recommendations for us. And since we followed those, that's when we implemented the off-duty officers as well.
So do you recall when that was?
In April?
Probably, yes, in April would be my guess.
Okay. You did that in April, yet since April, though, there's still been multiple, we still had multiple reports.
Yeah, and some of it, you know, is quite confusing for us to be honest. For example, what's been in the news and what's happened this last weekend is a prime example of some of the tavern reports that we get that are, we feel very blindsided by. There was a gentleman who wasn't allowed entry because he was intoxicated. He went around the corner and picked a fight with someone, got in a fight. We felt concerned and called the ambulance for him. And we're told we didn't do anything wrong, that we wouldn't have a tavern report. And then we find out via the news that we have a tavern report. It seems that no matter what we do, there always seems to be a tavern report, even if we're told we're not doing anything wrong.
And so as Chair of the Law Department, I want to say that tavern reports aren't necessarily bad in and of themselves. They're not. They're simply reports, and we get them. And I look at them weekly and I'll, I mean, I pull them up and I'll say a lot of times the bar did the right thing. If, in fact, you were the callers on Sunday,
Yeah.
that would be the right thing. That wouldn't add to it. But we, the problem is, is we've had the problems previously with delayed, I mean, part of my biggest concern is the delayed entry for officers when they're coming to attempt, you know, to come into the bar, they're being kept out and we don't know why.
Yeah.
The smell, having marijuana be in the bar, being smoked in the bar. You have the combination of marijuana and alcohol, just kind of, it's kind of blatantly out there. And those are some of the issues I see. Now, at this point in time, you know, I want good owners who have businesses to succeed.
Yeah.
That's my goal. It's good for you, it's good for the city of Omaha, we've got, helps contribute to the tax base and everything else. But I also think that sometimes we need to put some extra conditions and have some extra oversight on here tonight. So I want to let you know that today is just about whether you do the long form or not. It's not necessarily that we want to revoke your license, but there have been changes since you originally got your initial license. So for purposes of the renewal, we didn't have this information. Things, things have changed in the number of tavern reports that have happened. Part of it also is the number of police officers then that have been, had to take off what they were doing. I mean, at one point in time, we had at least six police officers, six cars down there. So you're looking at maybe 12 police officers in their shift. And so that then makes the rest of the area unsafe when we have to have that many officers come to one bar. when we have to have that many officers come to one bar. And so, that's where I think, that's where the kind of the material change, in my opinion, has happened since you were initially granted your liquor license. So, what I'm looking at right now is that you do do a formal renewal of the application, and maybe that'll give you the chance to, at this point, to maybe actually meet with your neighbors. You need to do the reach out to your neighbors and to the neighborhood. I mean, we tell that to bar owners. If you wait for them to reach out to you, it means that there's much bigger problems that may not be able to be fixed. And so, I, I do think you need to meet with the neighbors and make sure that the things you're doing are working. And that you don't necess, you shouldn't actually have to be told to make changes when you know that there's problems.
Yeah. I would just add that I have, we have actively reached out to neighbors and not gotten a response. I mean, even went so far to drop off a fruit basket and get nothing. But I understand what you're saying, I understand the recommendation.
Yeah, I would definitely meet with them about, and give them a phone number. They need to be able to call when there's a problem. You don't want to wait for them to have to email Councilman Bagley to say, you know, here were the problems that we've had. It would be better if they had your direct phone number so that maybe you could take care of the problem immediately as opposed to, you know, Councilman Bagley getting it the following Monday. So, those are just some recommendations to you. I just, I want you to know that what we're asking for right now is just that you file a long-form application. It would come back before us then to determine whether your license is renewed. We're not deciding that today.
Okay.
It's just to fill out the long form.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
One last comment. We want you to succeed, and the financial resource that it takes for the Omaha police to respond, as Councilmember Melton laid out. If there's six cars, that's up to 12 officers. And if people that are enjoying Leahy or Millworks or the Old Market area, that's resources of public safety. And the reach out to the neighbors, that is great, but you need to really, really make that effort. I'm not saying you haven't, but I'm not hearing much on my end that that's taking place. I'm going to take your, your word that you're doing that. I, I'll just leave it, you don't have to answer this, but would you feel safe enough at this point to invite those neighbors into the bar for a coffee or a tea or a beer? And if it was me, I would say, no, you don't have to answer that. But I, I would have reservations doing that right now. But I, I appreciate you coming today, and Mr. McGinn, with what you said, and we met with you in the past. But I, I think this is a process that needs to be done, and maybe it makes it better for you going through that with outreach to others and going through the long-form process, and then it comes back to us. So, I, I really encourage you to do that because it's important for the public safety of anybody in the Old Market. People need to feel safe down there, and in my view, clearly, that hasn't happened, and this is a step we'll take to try to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion in a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Melton.
This is a public hearing.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
That already happened, Larry. Sit down, please.
This is a public hearing.
Public hearing already happened. Madam Clerk.
We're not allowed to speak.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on Agenda Items 24 through 52 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item Number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Thank you very much. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. 24 through 30 has been done. I'd like to speak on 47 through 52, and specifically Number 48. If there was time, another one, but I'll do that in a few minutes. All of these are for nominations, which we don't have any say on, to a Human Relations Board, Human Resources and Relations Boards. Now, I object to this because, number one, every city department is subject to the same laws that I am if I'm an employee of any other business. So, we really don't need a Human Relations Board because every business gets legal advice as to what they can or they can't do under the Constitution of the United States and specific laws on discrimination, race, racism, whatever. What this board seems to be doing through your resolutions, and I have talked to you about before, is inserting language such as that that most people call "language of the critical race theory", which is a throwback from Germany.
Larry, we're not talking about that today.
No, no, we, I've talked to you about that before. We do not,
That's not the topic today.
These citizens do not want an unelected board putting words in our mouths and forcing us to go by a city charter for the next 20 years that you people say is racist and making me guilty every day with your resolutions. You need to stop that. Thank you.
Other proponents or, or proponents for Agenda Items 24 through 52?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, Number 51. I would like to say that to the international student, konnichiwa. Ni hao. Namaste. We don't all debate like this, but I was teaching that class at one time. I enjoy your post. Have a good day.
Anyone else on是一件24 through 52? Seeing none, public hearings are closed? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 53, an ordinance to approve a street name change in the Hamptons addition to change N Street to Lakeview Street.
Public hearing was already held. This is the vote on Number 53. No further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 54, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures. Group Number 2022-01 is amendment of the whole requested by the Planning Department.
The vote on Number 54 is today. No further lights. Is there a motion? I want to note there's also an amendment of the whole on this one. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 55, an ordinance to acquire private property for the repair exposed sanitary sewer crossings project.
Public hearing on Number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
I think someone left their cart, Mr. Frinson. I'm trying to be on my best behavior for all the international community today. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Samalekum. Inshallah. And there's one more. We'll have to do this international studies more. It's a wonderful program. In the meantime, I'm supporting Number 50, what is it, 55? Galen Gate Karim. Ni hao, China.
Any other proponents on Number 55? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 56, an ordinance vacating the East West Alley within Block 1, Kent's Edition. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 57, an ordinance vacating the East West Alley within Block 7, Briggs Place. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on Number 57 is today. Proponents, please. Donnie, if you're speaking, this has to be about Briggs Place, okay?
Yes, sir.
No other commentary other than this item?
I'm trying to think. Oh, I forgot something. What was you say? You just say Molly Maguire, Mama, that's South Sudan, that's what you said?
That's not what I said. This is Item Number 57. Do you have something to add on Number 57?
I was thinking about Sudan, sorry.
Thank you. Any other proponents on Number 57? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 58, an ordinance approving an agreement with Douglas Nielsen for stabilized sewage sludge services.
Public hearing on Number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 59, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Council Bluffs for yard waste services.
Public hearing on Number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Tyler.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. Wanted to say a few things about what this is and then answer any questions that you may have. This, this agreement with the City of Council Bluffs, it's a short-term agreement. Council Bluffs is doing some, doing what we did a few years ago, and they're going to co-collect the yard waste. With that, until that takes place, they need to take place the yard waste they're currently collecting. The current processor is not going to make some investments to continue that service for them that would need to take place. So, the City of Council Bluffs came to us looking for a short-term agreement to take their yard waste at our Omaha Grow facility. We will be taking approximately 6,500 tons of that material over the next year. That will increase our production by about a third. So, this is a good thing for the City of Council Bluffs. It's a good thing for the city of Omaha. We'll get a little bit of additional revenue with not much additional cost and have any, answer any question you may have.
Thank you. Thanks for that summary and also for your explanation this morning. I do see this as a positive thing too, by which we can accept and increase our compounding at the City of Omaha by working together with the City of Council Bluffs.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 60, an ordinance to accept and authorize the Highway Safety Program grant in the amount of $95,000.
Public hearing on Number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 61, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Firefighters Association, Local Number 385, to approve an addendum to implement a special pay for 1A plan and a health reimbursement plan. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on Number 61 is today. Proponents, please.
Bernard Indembush, Deputy City Attorney. What you have before you is an amendment to our bargain agreement with Local 385. As you may recall, in the last round of negotiations with Local 385, we included language in Article 39 of that contract that we would explore additional alternatives for Local 385 retirees. What you have before you is the culmination of a couple of years of work to get to that between the city and the union. And you'll see that it's an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement, but in fact, it's primarily the adoption of a 401A Roth Plan and a HRA, which would be a mechanism that our retired firefighters can put the annual and sick leave payout that they receive at the time of their retirement and be able to have a tax-free option to be able to invest that, that money and defer the taxes. Obviously, at some point in time, they'd have to pay the taxes when they get the benefit of it. It's not uncommon for firefighters to have annual and sick leave balances that require a payout in excess of $100,000 in some instances just because the amount of leave that they carry over as a result of our sick leave kind of being our short-term disability policy. The, this is a one-time thing. The money will get paid into the accounts. They'll be managed. There are representatives of fire union and representatives from Lifetime Retirement Partners who'll be overseeing it. City has little fiduciary responsibility, and we did spend significant time ensuring the legality of this with the Internal Revenue Code and the laws of the state of Nebraska. So, happy to answer any questions, and I know that Mr. Towey, Mr. Carmichael, and Mr. Sanfilippo will also be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Matt Carmichael, the Omaha Professional Firefighters, 6005 Rover Street, 68108. Just here to answer any question you have to have. If you need any more follow-up with what Mr. Indembush said, we're here to help you out.
Great. Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 62, an ordinance to approve the 1501 Mike Fahey Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on Number 62 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 63, an ordinance to approve the Keyline Building Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on Number 63 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. And again, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Councilmembers. Bob Griffith here on behalf of the applicant 11440 West Center Road. If you recall, the plan for this project was before you last week, which proved this is the agreement for that same project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, 68132. Correct me if I'm wrong, but within the last few weeks on these hearings and things, did we not indicate that this building would be used for Douglas County and City offices, maybe for lawyers, judges? Am I wrong? Okay. I apologize.
The new juvenile justice, so the people that are in there that work for the county, like the juvenile attorneys and some of the public offenders and people that are in there, will all be moving to the new building. So, this has nothing to do with them. This will be all private attorneys.
In your documents, it doesn't say who LLC is, but implies.
It's a private business.
Implication was that the city was investing in that building with TIF. Excuse me.
Any opponents to Number 63? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Item 64, an ordinance to approve an agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC to provide broker services to the City of Omaha for the purpose of procuring insurance for various city properties.
Public hearing on Number 64 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 65, an ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public road license agreement with Google Fiber Inc. for a period of 10 years.
Public hearing on Number 65 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jacqueline Morrison, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. What you have before you is an ordinance to approve the non-exclusive public road license agreement between the City of Omaha and Google Fiber. Just wanted to provide some context to council. This agreement was negotiated with the Public Works Department from the City of Omaha, the Law Department for the City of Omaha, as well as the Mayor's Office. All parties are here to answer any questions that you may have. I did send council a copy of the ordinance, or, sorry, the Nebraska State Statute 86-1241, subsection 2. That was the section that was referenced this morning and pre-council as it relates to when we can accept fees for the use of our right-of-way. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Rachel Merlow, Head of Government and Community Affairs for Google Fiber Central Region.
Andy Simpson, General Manager for the Central Region of Google Fiber.
Google Fiber has been serving customers for 10 years, and we are now in 19 cities across the country. We're very excited to be here exploring expansion into Omaha. We believe that more choice is good for customers. We would like to acknowledge that while we can't comment on what other companies are doing, we focus on offering our customers the things that they need, like fast internet, the equipment, Wi-Fi, and unlimited data that goes along with that so that we can do business without regular price increases or surprise fees on bills. We do not offer a cable TV product. Other companies, under the alphabet umbrella, including Google, have made significant investments in the Omaha community. The Google Fiber team has been working very closely with your city staff over the past several months to develop this agreement that is before you today. And we appreciate the collaboration we've experienced so far with your staff, and we're here to take any questions you may have today.
Thanks. Thanks. And Rachel, your address too, just for the record?
908 Broadway Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri, 64105.
Other proponents?
More informational than anything else, but Bernard Indembash, Deputy City Attorney, and I apologize, I was not able to make the pre-council meeting this morning. I'd had some training of some new police sergeants on my schedule for about six months, so that's where I was this morning. But obviously, the agreement before you is to allow for the placement of fiber in the right-of-way. I would point out that we have numerous agreements with a number of telecommunication company to have fiber in our right-of-way. This is a little bit different, obviously, in the hope that it's going, the thought is it's going to be more extensive, which is when you look at the Exhibit A that's attached to the agreement here, that's actually an Exhibit A that we've had in existence for some time, has been attached to any number of agreements that have been before this council. Was it tweaked for this particular case? It absolutely was. And frankly, the expectation is, is what we've permitted and are going to permit Google to do, we would be willing to permit Cox or any other entity who wants to provide a similar service to do. One thing that I do think is to want to make clear, Google Fiber and Cox Communications, obviously Cox was at the pre-council, they've sent a communication to you, Google is providing broadband. I appreciate a lot of people are using that internet streaming for purposes of television, but it is not. It's a different product and a different item than what Cox Communication provides. By way of history, Cox Communications has had a franchise agreement to provide cable television within the City of Omaha for in excess of 40 years. And when they first started, they had an exclusive franchise, meaning they were, there was no other competition, which is part of the reason that they were required to provide service through the entire geographic footprint of the City of Omaha. Cable television is regulated by the Federal Communications Commission. There are all sorts of rules, and I am, we all know that, and requires a number of different things, including community service, public access, and also contemplates franchise fees. I would also point out, I believe that Cox has dual fiber, meaning that the fiber that provides your Cox Communication service, which is regulated and which they do pay a franchise fee pursuant to the city code, that same fiber is also used to provide internet broadband service, which is something that there is no fee based on that particular use of that particular fiber. But they are, do have the ability to lay that dual band because of the broad, the franchise agreement we've had with them, which has provided access to the right-of-way and also provided access to private property for purposes of our platting and everything else over a period of time, which is why if you have a property that's been platted in the last 40 years, you have easements that Cox has the benefit of over your property to provide that particular franchise service. This particular agreement is not that. This particular agreement permits Google to put fiber in the right-of-way. As I indicated, whatever rules apply to them, we intend, and that was the discussion I had with Mr. Stube and Mr. Rousier in the Public Works Department, that the, whatever things we establish here would become kind of the norm as we move forward. Exhibit A does require that the property be returned to its prior condition, and it only controls use of the right-of-way. There is nothing about this agreement that gives Google the right, if they would happen to put in fiber in front, in the right-of-way, which is obviously part of the grass area in front of my house, if they would happen to put Google Fiber in there, they have no right to connect that particular fiber to my house absent me agreeing to them to do so. And I'm trying to address some of the questions that I'm aware were raised this morning in anticipation of that. As part of our discussion, Google did agree to provide a 2% fee of gross revenue. That is, in talking with some experts in the field, consistent with the highest fee that they've paid in other places and has kind of become the norm, and frankly, in communications with lawyers for Cox, they concur that that's the case. The issue that we have, or at least I believe we have, and I appreciate other lawyers in my office have looked at the same issue, and believe me, I want to be able to say we have the ability to charge a fee. I work, I'm an attorney for the City of Omaha. I'm not an attorney for Cox Communications. I'm not an attorney for Google Fiber. If I thought there was a legitimate basis for us to do it, I would encourage us to charge a fee as much as we could possibly charge, because that's what, that's who I represent. But Nebraska adopted the Small Cell Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. When I first looked at it, I said, oh, that can't possibly apply to this particular case, because that's not the intention of it. And I would agree, that was not the intention of that particular act. But when I read the plain language, and I know Ms. Morrison sent you the statute this morning, but when I read the plain language, a Nebraska statute 86-1241-2, and I look at the definitions it references and definitions it references in the code and the definitions that's referenced in federal law, because the definitions in this particular act do reference the definitions used in federal law, I come to the conclusion that the plain language of the statute prohibits us from filing, collecting a tax fee or rate on this particular service. I didn't want to come to that conclusion. I don't particularly like the conclusion. But the reality is, I think that's what the law says. I know, I'm pretty confident that wasn't the intention, but as I think we've recently learned with the issue in regards to the OPPD funds and distribution to the various tax entities, that the plain language of the statute is going to be what people are going to say applies, as opposed to this is what we wanted to do, or this is what the thought was. Because obviously, for a number of years, when it comes to that, those proceeds were distributed in a manner that was consistent with intent, but apparently not in a manner consistent with what the statute provided. So I did have a conversation with the attorney for Cox Communications yesterday. I did indicate to him, and obviously, I mean, he obviously represents Cox, and I appreciate that, but I, you know, it was a very pleasant conversation. I did indicate to him that I would try to identify one or other two attorneys that may have been familiar with this and worked and have a conversation with them to see if they could offer me anything different that would cause me to believe that there's a basis to assert a different position. But as I sit here today, as I stand here today, I'm comfortable that that's what the language of the statute applies, even though I would certainly agree that that was probably not the intention. So I'm happy to answer any more questions, but I will get out of your way now.
Thank you. Any other proponents for now? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, Kim Rowell, Cox Communications, 11505 West Dodge Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. Good afternoon, President and City Councilmembers. First, I simply want to state that Cox Communications' position on this is truly neutral. We are only an opponent to the current form of the proposed agreement. Like Google, we fully embrace competition and believe that choice is better for everyone. With that said, I want to begin by thanking the mayor and the city, and certainly Bernard, for sitting down with us last week in advance of this meeting and allowing us to express our concerns. We appreciate their willingness to answer our questions and engage in dialogue. As many of you know, and as Bernard had mentioned, Cox Communications has a long history in Omaha. We built the first cable system over 40 years ago. We've come a long way in that time from being the sole provider of video services in the market to building one of the most robust networks in the Midwest. Times and technologies have certainly changed our product selection and offerings. In Omaha, we compete with dozens of others every day for customers in residential broadband, video, telephone, and in many other cities across the country. We also compete daily for business services and advertising dollars. As is set forth in our agreement, we collect and remit to the city a franchise fee of 5% on many of those services for the privilege of entering the city's right-of-way. That amounts to nearly $5 million a year. That's not the case with the agreement before you now. As Bernard mentioned, contained within it is a provision that says that only if a law is changed or a court orders can Omaha collect a fee for this new competitor entering the right-of-way. To be clear, we are here today to embrace competition. We hold that true competition is only possible if all competitors are playing by a similar set of rules. If passed in its current form, this agreement will undoubtedly cause Omaha to forego significant revenue. What happens if the law is never changed or if the matter is never litigated? There are too many unknowns to pass this matter before you in its current form. The financial ramifications are far too great for the city. We would encourage you to carefully consider the impact this agreement will have on your revenue, the competition, and the chilling effect of choosing winners and losers in the marketplace. We respectfully ask that the city delay action on this item until an agreement can be made where all competitors are playing by similar, a similar set of rules. Cox stands ready to work towards solutions with the city, answer questions you might have, but most importantly, continue serving the residents and businesses of Omaha. Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon, Councilman, Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Queston Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Sir, gentlemen, lady, I speak like 15 languages. Is this a good time to say that Michaela's going to get the House Representative seat that Don vacant or-
No, it's not. It's only the time to address the Google Fiber contract.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was going to use one of them languages and tell an international student to support Michaela for the new vacant House of Representatives.
Any other opponents on number 65? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton, was your light on?
It was. Actually, I'm fine. It's public hearing today, and I'll refrain.
Okay. I will then take the floor and ask a few questions. I think of either Rachel or Andy, if you don't mind. Thanks for being here and thanks for your interest in Omaha and your investment in Omaha that's being proposed here today. I think as everyone has talked about today, we do appreciate competition in the marketplace, and I think that's what this will do, and it's good for consumers in that respect throughout Omaha, in addition to the investment this means for the city. But I also want to expand upon a little bit the questions that were happening earlier about a level playing field in that respect and its relationship to state law. That seems to be the issue here. It seems everyone is agreeing that we'd like to have additional competition, we'd like to have additional service providers, we'd like to maximize the revenue to the city in that respect when we have folks using the right-of-way. But in this particular instance, as Mr. Indembash has observed, or is observing, he believes there's a barrier in state law to doing that. I assume that's your read of the law as well?
It is.
In your other communities where you've been, I don't expect this to be an exhaustive answer if you don't know every community, but in most communities where you operate, do you pay some kind of revenue or gross charge on revenue?
Sure. In the cities where the state law does not prohibit that fee, we have landed at 1% to 2% of our revenue. Our customer base is strictly based on broadband revenue. Other companies pay that fee, as mentioned, based on television subscribers or telephone subscribers, which we do not have those products. So in other places, it's been 1% to 2%. Thus, the 2% fee that would be triggered, as mentioned in this agreement before you today, should the landscape change here in Nebraska.
Okay. And do you know, is that literally every other community that's outside of Nebraska? Or is it just very?
It varies by community and by state, based on state statute as well.
Okay.
For example, in Kansas and Missouri, both those states allow for the fee right now to be collected, again, with agreement with the municipality.
Okay. And in your early on discussions, as characterized by Mr. Indembash, you were willing to pay that 2%, it's just that the conclusion was, Mr. Indembash felt it was prohibited by state law?
Correct. We initially came to the city with a proposal that included the fee, and it was after their interpretation of the state law that we had to pivot to the format that we are discussing today.
Okay. If there was a proposed change in that state law, that's not something you would oppose, right?
No, sir.
Couple more questions for you, then maybe one for Mr. Indembash. This gets more to the service provision, so as you just confirmed, you're only offering broadband, nothing else, right?
Correct.
And that's your intention now and intention through this 10-year agreement?
That's correct, yeah. Customers, consumers can choose whatever they want to stream or to go over the top of that, but we're providing the pipeline, the internet pipeline.
Yeah, realize with the evolving technology, the service provision gets a little murky in terms of it's an evolving nature and who can offer what and who's streaming what and all those things. Talk a little bit about the build-out and customer service part of this too. So I do know in other communications-type contracts we have, there have been specific provisions that talk about customer service, expectations and measurements, and then also build-out throughout the city. I know in our conversation early on, I asked you the question about how would we ensure a build-out will be equitable across all portions of the city, realizing it probably takes some time, but that we aren't just serving one portion of the city as opposed to another. Your response to those questions?
Yeah, on the first piece, on the build-out itself, it is our intention to build to as many customers, households, and small businesses here in Omaha as possible. At this point, we're very early phase in the design and engineering part of this project, but it would be right now looking like a build starting within the inner parts of I-680, if that gives you some idea of how this might unfold, although this is going to be a multi-year project for us to serve the market. Beyond that, on the customer service piece, that is something that we are very proud of at Google Fiber, that we are obsessed with customer service. We believe that we have a customer experience that can really be surprising for many people who engage with internet service providers, and it's not just something you have to take our word for. We've received several awards in the industry for our performance there. What the customers can experience, whether or not there are customers, even just the folks who live here in Omaha as we do our build, is upfront communications prior to construction starting, having 24/7 support available, whether they want to ask questions about the internet products that we offer, or have any concerns regarding construction or restoration along the way. Items that we want to be able to address and alleviate your office staff from having to take calls from residents who want to know what's going on in their communities. That's a piece that we have been diligent on from day one. Honestly, a piece too where what we have seen in markets where we have entered, not only are prices going down, speeds going up, customer service tends to improve across the board.
Sorry, one additional item on the build-out. It benefits us from a financial perspective to build as many homes as possible in the area, because we're able to spread those costs out. And so, again, we're trying to build to as many residences and small businesses as possible.
Okay. So you believe we started inside the interstate beltway there, and how long would a build-out take in terms of providing service across the city?
Sure. It's likely a four to five year. Again, that's, we're very early stage, but part of it will be working with the Public Works Department and the speed at which we can get permits and inspectors and those things approved, in addition to how quickly our crews can move. But that's a rough estimate right now.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Indembash, if you would. I suppose I'll start with a similar question to you. I think in other contracts, we have specified, I think even timeframes by which a service must be built out throughout the community, so we're insured of an equitable provision of services to all citizens. I'm not questioning what we just heard from Google Fiber representatives, but typically, that is spelled out in an agreement, right, was that considered here?
Well, I don't know that I'd say typically. I'm certainly aware that's in some agreements. It's not in most of the telecommunications agreements that I've seen, but it certainly happened. There was some discussion about doing it, but at least the thought process at this point was, it was just, we were talking about the ability to use the right-of-way as the primary thing. I fully expected that that would be one of the issues that the council would raise. We certainly could have done it. There was some discussion about what it was. I mean, I'll be honest, I think me and the other people that were in some of those discussions were surprised when they said they're talking about, I think the perception was is that people would be going further west, but when they indicated the plan was within the 680 corridor, that was a little of a surprise. But there's no question, it could have been happened, but it was not, the decision was not made to do it.
Okay. Clearly, that would be our expectation, given the comments during the public hearing here and remarks we just heard from the company as well, I think.
I think that's fair.
Okay, now let's talk about the issue at hand, I guess, the state law. So I appreciate your remarks about if you felt you could have, you would have, and that's why this document does refer to the 2% as a possibility should state law change.
And/or a court decision, and those aren't the only two things. If there was a change in interpretation, I think we'd have some flexibility, but yeah.
Okay. Two follow-ups there. In your- In your remarks, you also felt it was not the intention of the law to do that, even though by your read it does do that. Would it be worth getting clarification on the intention of that law or the legislative intent, either from the Attorney General or from some other source legislative in nature?
Well, I have no problem getting the legislative intent, and I appreciate, and I'll say this with all due respect to the Attorney General's office, the Attorney General's office is an office of lawyers, just like our office is an office of lawyers, and lawyers have opinions on a variety of things. Obviously, we had a lawsuit brought by the Attorney General earlier this year where we had a disagreement about the city's authority to be able to do things, and ultimately, the city prevailed. So I don't mind asking the Attorney General, but I don't know that I would make a statement that, and it was dismissed, but there was an order entered that was inconsistent with, I understand. But I mean, this idea that the Attorney General is the ruler of all the laws in the state of Nebraska is, I think, a little bit of a fallacy. They certainly are good lawyers, and they issue opinions. And that's not to say that if they gave an opinion, I certainly would listen to it. The Public Service Commission would be another potential person. Obviously, they have a more specific expertise in this particular area, and that's an entity that I frankly may try to reach out to if I have time in the next week. But, you know, the legislative intent might be fine. I don't, unfortunately, the legal reality is the plain language of a statute prevails over legislative intent or anything else. So the only time legislative intent becomes relevant is if the plain language of the statute is unclear. Unfortunately, I don't think it is, because if I thought it was unclear, I would have felt much more comfortable saying, I don't think it applies.
Okay. I think that might be worthwhile if you did have the opportunity.
I'll try to have that conversation.
The SC or others, just make sure, because two percent of gross revenues, I think, is probably a lot of money to the city of Omaha, right?
I think the expectation is that it will. And I'll be honest with you, this is not the only, we have another entity that we're having discussions with who wants to offer fiber in Omaha as well, and we want to, this is the model for what we're going to do, because we want to be consistent.
Okay. All right, let's see if we can make that happen, and then we'll get that answer back. But I guess the secondary question would be if that answer is not consistent with what we believe was intended or believe, or what seems to be the desire and willingness of everyone talking on this item today, would a change in that law be considered or be supported by the city come January?
I have every indication to believe that my office and I think even the administration would support that, though I certainly can't commit them. I don't have it made to rec, and I would imagine that the council would have a similar interest.
I think we would be interested in that, and we're already interested in the Small Cell Act from last session as well, and some of the issues we've had in our neighborhoods.
I understand.
I know that'll be an item that is introduced again in January and could also relate to this particular topic. Okay, I see there's another light on. I think I'll ask Ms. Rauw if she wants to add anything at this point in this conversation or?
Thank you.
Anything additional?
Nope, nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President, and Bernard, you can sit. No, you're good. As we went through this and talking to colleagues and staff and speaking to folks at Cox and listening to Rachel and Andy here today, can you come up for a second, please? I appreciate you being here, and so, Council President Fesserson touched on most of the things I wanted to ask, as he does a great job at that, as always. So tell me the process of, you guys come to town, notification if you're gonna go to Don Rose's yard or a neighbor's yard, how does that notification work? You talked about the customer service of Google. You're good ambassadors of it, but tell me how that works, because people in my district and certainly in the city, when they pick up their phone and call, they want to talk to somebody. They don't want to push twenty different buttons, and are those people gonna be here in town?
Sure. We have a central nationwide, what we call, construction experience line that a live person answers that then has direct access to the people that are on the ground here that are doing the work, and we expect to stay very close in touch with Mr. Stube's team in terms of daily street sheets of where are our crews and where are we working, so that we can make that connection as quickly as possible. But there will be people leading the work that are here and locally available and able to be reached.
In terms of the resident notification piece that you mentioned, typically what that includes is our crews going door-to-door with door hanger notifications saying, "Construction is about to happen in your neighborhood. Here's what you can expect that to look like. Here are the phone numbers for Google Fiber to please call directly. Of course, you can reach us online if you wish to chat that way," and those lines are staff 24/7. We will have a team on the ground in Omaha, the contractors who are doing the construction work, but typically what you're going to see is a local team who's here, whether they're working in sales, trying to get agreements with owners of multi-dwelling units, for example. There are folks who represent us in the Omaha community when we're ready to stand up the business.
Okay, and I think that certainly is an important thing that I learned last summer with the cell tower item that was mentioned earlier. If you guys are taking that step, that's certainly a good thing for people instead of getting home and seeing a backhoe or a crew in their front yard and a bunch of flags and paint, not knowing what's going on. And the most important thing I heard you say in that is, it doesn't have the city council members' number on that notification. While we take all the calls and we're glad to do that, I think it's incumbent upon your business that you guys are addressing that, and I'm glad to hear that you are, because that is important to have, your people are out there putting the door hangers, talking to the constituents of ours, of the neighborhoods you're in, and it'll give, you're saying it'll give a direct contact number or a website?
Yes, and it is much better for us that they call us, because that allows us to open a ticket, to track this, to investigate, to make sure that we're, that the teams are resolving it correctly before those complaint tickets are closed out, whereas if it goes to your office, it might take longer for that to happen as you're trying to forward people to the right folks. So we want to be able to take those calls. Of course, if and when you may get a phone call from someone, I'm your point of contact as in the government affairs role, and of course, there will be folks on the ground too and down the road who I'm sure would be happy to talk with you.
And we've been made aware of the situation with the sidewalk and the cell tower, and so we are coming with very open eyes, and we know that every house that we pass is a potential customer, and so our goal is to make that experience as positive as it can be.
And how, so you started installing this broadband, you tear somebody's yard up. Tell me the process of, sorry, I'm picking on Don again, but you're in Don's yard, and you're done there, or Vinnie lives next door, and you kind of tear his yard up a little bit. How do you fix that? What's the process of that?
Yeah, I mean, as I think Bernard stated, in the agreement, it talks about restoration to the prior state, and so that's our intent to do that. And if there's ever any questions, whether it's our crews that are on-site or it's a call into our customer experience line, we can have that addressed if it's not up to the standards or the expectation. Many times, and most of the times, we prefer that our crews take before and after video and photos to, you know, to look at sidewalks, to look at driveway approaches and those sorts of things, so that there can be some evidence here, a trail as well.
In my real, well, my other job as a claims representative at the Omaha Public Power District, we have crews out parking equipment on concrete, on property, on sprinklers, on private lines, all those things. So I'm also glad to hear that you're documenting that. That'll help you guys.
Absolutely.
And one other thing I wanted to ask, so if, in order to restore that property to how it was before your crews went in there, does that include an option if the landowner says, "Hey, I have John's landscape business that does my yard. I would like them to fix it," instead of your crews doing that? Because there's a lot of people that are particular about their properties, as I'm sure you guys know. Is that gonna be an option?
Yeah, it is. It depends on the exact situation, but many times it's, if you want to turn in invoice for the work that was performed, as long as it seems consistent with what it would take, that we could hire it for, then we're open to that and do that in other situations.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I had one question for Mr. Stube.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Bob, we talked a little bit in pre-council about micro trenching, and I know your folks in Public Works had, from what I heard this morning, this isn't the first time we talked about what Google's intending to do here. Can you talk briefly about the process of micro trenching like we did this morning?
Yeah, so as Bernard indicated, that there's an Exhibit A that's attached with the agreement, and the majority of the information in Exhibit A requires a certain depth. Probably the only modification that was made that Public Works and the city agreed to, based on a request by Google, was the depth of their facility that's essentially abutting the individual properties. We indicated that we did not want them to be at a shallow depth going underneath streets. So there's a minimum of 24-inch depth on residential streets, a minimum of 30-inch depth on arterial streets, and then underneath the sidewalk, so we required a 14-inch depth. And anything that was outside of the sidewalk that abuts the individual property, whether it's a residence or a commercial building, that that could be at a lower depth.
Okay, I'm happy to, please.
The term, I just want to clarify the term as we use it for micro trenching. Many times, micro trenching is saw cutting of a street, and saw cutting, you know, six to 10 to 12 inches deep with a two-inch wide trench in a street that is then backfilled. That is not what we're intending to do in Omaha. You have concrete streets and spend a lot of money on them, and we appreciate that with the weather and everything else. So our deployment method here in Omaha is intended to be behind the curb in the softscape or green space that's there. So I just want to clarify, we do have some markets where we saw cut the streets if they're asphalt, but that is not the intent here.
And I, believe it or not, I did a Google search when you guys were on our agenda, and that was an article that was passed by a constituent on that, so I'm, that's a good thing that with, we talked a little bit about the brine and the steps the city takes to clear ice and snow, and those shoulders, if they were to get cut up by this process, and that would be costly to taxpayers. So one last question for Bernard in law. Sorry, Bernard.
Bernard Indabash, Deputy City Attorney.
As you always do, you simplify things for me. So the reason that Google is not being assessed the fees is because of LB-184?
If that's the LB for the Small Cell Deployment, yes.
Okay.
Because they obviously use those LB numbers every two years, so if that's the Small Cell Deployment Act, correct.
And that's some, we, you know, the city, as you mentioned, we may look to address that in the upcoming legislative session. And if this gets adopted, I frankly would encourage you to do so, because it would be silly not to, to be honest, in my view.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Fesserson. Just a couple of questions this week. I'll have some more next week as well, but maybe Rachel and Andy, I think the announcement when was made that Google was coming to Omaha for this service, I think there was a lot of excitement about that, but I want to ask a couple blunt questions about what's happened in some of the other markets where you've made similar announcements and kind of the, I'll say, follow-through maybe hasn't been whipped up to the expectations that were laid out.
Sure.
And I think Mr. Fesserson maybe touched a little bit on this about whether or not we had performance standards or benchmarks in the agreement, but can you maybe address some of the reasons why this wasn't successful in some of the other cities like Louisville, for example?
Yeah, sure. Louisville's part of our history and public record, and so appreciate the question. That was a number of years ago, and Google's mantra is to try and move quickly and innovate and learn. And so that was one thing where we tried that, the shallow trench, micro trenching, it was very shallow, and we learned very quickly that it was not rigorous enough in terms of the build methodology. It didn't provide the customer experience you want, it didn't provide to the city the stability in the streets that we wanted, and so it's taken us time to evolve and learn. And over the last four years, we basically, once Louisville happened, slowed down and decided to put the focus on the operations and make sure that we had that rigor in our performance. And so we've moved forward with that, and we've learned a lot. This is a hard business, as any provider will tell you, to be in the right-of-way and working in the way that we do. And so we've made slow, steady progress and feel like we have a much better plan and set of standards with the builds that we do since the Louisville experience that we had. And we ended that in an amicable way with the city of Louisville. It's unfortunate, but it was a learning experience that allowed us to take a lot of, I think, positive steps.
And so if I'm correct, you're completely out of Louisville then, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess I'll go back to the schedule that you kind of proposed, and I'm not obviously gonna hold you to anything, because, but if you're saying it was a five to six-year build-out in rough terms?
I think I said four to five, but.
Okay, four to five, somewhere in there. I just, I wonder if there shouldn't be some language that addresses in some way, holding the Google to a schedule reasonable with expectations that there could be, you know, something, things might change and could extend, you know, like we get for contracts on rainy days for public works projects on paving or something like that. But so those are some of the things I'm gonna be kind of investigating over the next week. But I appreciate your response to some of those other, or at least to Louisville, but some of the other cities, too, where the build-out is originally kind of sold, wasn't what ended up being delivered.
And I guess I would suggest that I think Louisville's the example where we totally remove and do not have service anymore, but almost every other metro where we've started construction, it is now proceeding. We're in an expansion phase, and so in most of the municipalities that we're engaged in, there is an expansion going on in terms of our build and construction.
Okay, and I know that, I think there are a couple other cities that maybe felt that the schedule lapsed or had gone on long enough that, you know, they're still asking for service in certain areas. I think Charlotte might have been one.
Yeah, and there are, it's, we can't get everywhere at once, and so I'm sure.
Understand, and that's back to the point of, you know, let's make sure that we have reasonable and manageable expectations for the end user, the consumer.
Like, just as a point of reference, Kansas City is our oldest, most mature market, and in the 10 years that we've been working there, we, at this point, are, we've recently signed our agreement with our 28th municipality in that metro area. So that kind of gives you an idea of like how long it takes to serve, not just Kansas City proper, but looking at the development that happened across that area. I would also note that commitment to a particular build schedule is not something that's been previously included in any of our agreements across the country, so as you're contemplating that this week, we'd just offer that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perlerma.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bernard, if you could, please, I got a couple of questions, but we'll start with Bernard.
Bernard Indabash, Deputy City Attorney.
Thanks, Bernard. In the contract that we have for the right-of-way agreement, I'll have other questions like others, and I'm gonna try not to focus on what we've ever already heard, but one of the things that really stuck out to me was the agreement with the 10 years, with the additional 10 years, when I thought originally I heard from, and I'll ask them when they come up, that they've only been doing this for 10 years. So tell me why the city would enter an agreement of 10 years with additional 10 years?
Well, 10 years is the longest term that we can enter without coming back, so that's, there was some, actually some discussion about having a longer-term agreement, because obviously, once it's provided, they want to have the continued right to be able to occupy the right-of-way. The practical reason, and, you know, ultimately, I'm not the one who decides on the term, but the practical reason is, when you invest the money to put the material in, I think the expectation is they want to be able to continue to use the right, continue to be able to profit from it for a period of time. So if it takes five years to put it in, if the agreement's only five years, then you theoretically would need to come back and either get an extension of the agreement or they would no longer have an ability to use our right-of-way.
Okay. So I think the simplest way I can break this down is, there's three services that can be offered, which is the broadband, the TV, and the phone. He's gotta turn his hair and aid up. Broadband, TV, and phone. So what we have with this right-of-way agreement is, I believe we have Cox that's paying a fee for the cable and phone percentage, correct?
Cox has a franchise agreement. They pay a fee for the cable TV they provide, and I think they pay an occupation.
They pay a fee for the cable TV they provide, and I think they pay an occupation tax for the phone they provide. They do not pay a fee for the broadband they provide.
Okay, and that was my next question. They don't, they don't pay a fee for the broadband, neither would this agreement if it were to be approved with Google.
Correct, absent a change in the statute.
Okay. Thank you. And then we've got a couple of questions. I'm sorry, you got to say your name every time.
Rachel.
Andy Simpson.
So yeah, a quick Google search, too. I find things that are interesting. Obviously, everybody loves competition. But there was, there was one part of this, and I understand, but I don't understand, right? I'm not a communications expert, but I understand the broadband going in the ground, and I understand that you can provide other services as well. Tell me what your definition of the IPTV is along with this Google broadband.
Sure. IPTV is what I would describe as an over-the-top streaming. So people or consumers can choose to stream TV on their internet connection. And so we, again, we provide the connection, and consumers can choose any number of providers, Netflix, Hulu, Disney, YouTube TV, to consume whatever the content is that they want.
And I...
So it's not provided by us, and we don't have a channel lineup or any of those things.
Could you have a channel lineup? This is what I asked in pre-counsel.
Sure.
In other markets, do you have television or phone service to customers?
When we started the business, we did have a television product, and over time, we saw that consumers were more and more choosing to cut the cord, that they preferred to have the streaming services. So in the last couple of years, we have sunset that service. We no longer offer television service in any of our markets.
And you've heard about the build-out, and I think we all have questions, me particularly, because regardless of where you start in the city, myself in the southeast quadrant of the city, where you will jump over numerous parts of affordable dirt we have left, it doesn't quite fit with your business model. And if you're smart enough in business, you know the more customers you have, the more money you make. So tell me why somebody like me that lives in the furthest part away from where you're going to start, when would I see this service to southeast Omaha?
Again, I can't commit to specific timeframes for specific addresses, but the intent would be to build as much of the city in the four to five years. I'm sure that's an unsatisfactory answer, but at this point, we're, we still need this body's approval before we can even start the aggressive design and engineering of the network to know what some of those specific timelines and what's buildable and what hurdles there are to build.
I'd say broader benefits, whether the service is available in one particular neighborhood or another at a time, is that the marketplace becomes more favorable for consumers across the community because the competition elevates the game of others. And the other piece that is something we believe strongly in is in our work in digital equity. I think we talked a little bit about that in some of our pre-briefings, was that we work to identify the community-based organizations who know your community best to think about how we can build digital equity in a community. So in some cities, that looks like partnering with device refurbishers to make sure that lower-income families have access to the computers that they're going to need to enjoy internet access, or working with workforce development organizations to train people with digital literacy skills that they're going to need, working with organizations that serve immigrant communities so that those folks are trained to be safe and successful online. There are any number of things that we can do in the city outside of just providing access to the internet, going through the yards and signing up customers, that we believe will elevate the experience for all of those in this region.
Okay. And obviously, it's not just the southeast quadrant, it would be northeast as well. But same, you could say the same with northwest and southwest as you, as you get away from that middle focus of the infrastructure. But we also know that underground utilities and what's underground is a challenge, and of course, in the urban core, that becomes more relevant with the cost that would it be to provide this service. We'll see how it goes for next week. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 66, an ordinance to accept and authorize the fiscal year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program Wellness and Fitness Program Award.
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please.
Is this a public hearing?
They already, it was already held.
Why do you call it public hearing now?
Number 66, proponents, please. Mr. Towey, Mr. Garian, thanks for your patience.
No problem. Good afternoon. Trevor Towey, I'm the president of Omaha Professional Firefighters, Local 385, 6005 Grover Street. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, for the opportunity to speak here today on this important issue. I believe, I think we can all agree, firefighter, being a firefighter is a dangerous profession. The fortunate thing about that is there's organizations like myself and elected officials like yourselves that have been able to work together over the years to come up with solutions, revenues, policies that can help take a dangerous job, make it just a little bit safer. And, you know, fortunately, the city of Omaha has recognized those things that firefighters need to keep them safe. The dangers that firefighters faced 50 years ago aren't the same dangers that we're facing today. And it's because we've been able to work together that we've been able to come up with policies such as, you know, safer equipment, more firefighters, stricter fire codes, better building construction, all things in the mind to keep firefighters and the community safe. The number-one killer of firefighters today isn't fires, it's cancer. And the unfortunate fact about cancer, we all, we all know is it affects everybody. But what we've been focusing on the last 10 years is what we've learned is firefighters have a greater chance of being, of developing cancer, and in fact, a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general public. Just this last summer, the World Health Organization elevated the profession of firefighters to a Class 1 carcinogenic, which means just being a firefighter puts us on the same level as tobacco and benzene. So just being a firefighter puts us in that group of known cancer-causing agents. So there's good news, though. The good news is that the city of Omaha and the fire department in recent years have recognized the need to address the problem, and they've found the resources, and they've applied for grants, and they've budgeted money to provide firefighters with a second set of turnout gear. They've also provided extractor machines that we've put in the fire stations that allows us to decontaminate our gear as soon as we get back from a fire. Those are things that help keep us safe. But there's more that needs to be done, and this ordinance will help do that. Currently, there's multiple firefighters, active Omaha firefighters, that have been diagnosed and being treated for cancer as we speak. Hundreds more retirees have went through the same treatments, and many have, many have died. And that's why we feel that this ordinance is important, and it's our position that we should accept that grant money. We should implement some thorough cancer screening programs that will allow Omaha firefighters to know that their, that their health care is being prioritized and that we can maybe catch some cancers earlier, get the treatment for the firefighters so that they can continue doing the job and keeping Omaha safe. So I urge your adoption of the ordinance. I thank you for your time, and I'll be around for any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Mr. President, my name is Darren Garian. I am president of the Nebraska Professional Firefighters and rise in support of this ordinance. The, as President Towey said, firefighters have a 14% greater chance of actually dying from cancer, and not to get into statistics, but the importance of doing something like this is, is for an early detection so there can be early intervention so the firefighter can get back to doing the job that they love. If we can, if we can implement a screening process that can detect these things, we can treat them earlier and hopefully get them back on the job doing, keeping them off the sideline. The request of doing an ordinance like this and the money is not something that's taken lightly. It's important to us because of those things that we said. We ask that you look at this and move forward on this, and we're here to help in any way we can with, whether that's information or statistics or things like that, not to get into all the weeds or whatever, but we have lots of statistics and lots of information, the importance of this. We have somebody here that'll get into the weeds a little bit as far as why firefighters are different than the population that would be the general public or whatever. So with that, I ask for your support on this.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Poole, 726 North 57th Avenue. I am an internal medicine physician at Think Healthcare. I've had the opportunity to be involved in a pilot program of this health and wellness screening for firefighters. As you've heard, firefighters are a unique population. Everyone probably knows that firefighter, being a firefighter is a risky proposition. In your mind, you might think of burning buildings, and yes, that's clearly a risk. But less dramatic, but no less important, or really, these other risks, as you've heard, just being a firefighter is a carcinogen. Not only that, firefighters, if you look at on-the-job deaths in the firefighter community, about 40% die of sudden cardiac death, so they have a fatal cardiac event on the job. And furthermore, there's a high risk of PTSD, suicide, successful suicide. So these are all serious, important risks. Good news is that we can screen for these risks, and we think we can intervene early. And, you know, most things in healthcare, if you can get there early, you have a much better chance of having a good outcome. In regards to sudden cardiac death, the number-one risk factor of that would be what we call atherosclerotic cardiovascular disease, coronary artery disease. Well, we can screen pretty aggressively for this, whether it's just through blood pressure, cholesterol, body fat composition, stress tests. We have a lot of effective and screening modalities that if we're early and aggressive, we can change the underlying risk factors. It's the same goes for cancer. Early detection is always better than finding things late. And so knowing this population and instituting early aggressive cancer screening, we believe strongly that we can affect outcomes for a vital resource of our community. In regards to mental health, we're able to screen populations, and we can get people the help that they need. So what we found in our pilot program was that we are able to find risks, and we are able to intervene, and so I would strongly encourage adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, Michael Francis. I am the grant writer for the City of Omaha Fire Department, so I'm just available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 66? Seeing none, any opponents? It's got to be specific to the fire grant here, Donning, right?
Yes, sir. All I wanted is Mr. Begley, to please tell the firemen that the Navy has the strongest firemen they've ever seen. They keep saying they can beat us in smokers, so you could referee that for us, okay?
Any other opponents on number 66? Seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Mr. Towey, I might ask you a question. Want to come down?
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here and thank you for what you do and, and for giving us that summary and of the need for this grant and the risk that your employees face every day, which aren't just fighting fires, as you mentioned, it's these kind of health concerns as well. So I see this as a great opportunity to leverage this federal grant, over $1 million, with city funds as well, and it's an opportunity we should take to do exactly what we're describing here today. Would the, would the $1 million, 1.1 million, I guess, be enough to screen all firefighters or at least all frontline firefighters?
Trevor Towey, 6005 Grover Street. It's my understanding that this would be enough money to provide those screenings for one year's time.
Okay. Between now and September 2024, it looks like?
Yeah, that's, that's how I understand it, yes. And the hope would be, of course, that there'd be some value that we're going to be able to obtain by having these studies and that the positive effects will, you know, help to find funding in the future so we can continue this program.
And those screenings would be provided by who?
As I understand it, there would have to be some sort of bid proposal that the city would have to put out, and that there'd be multiple providers, I suspect, that would want to be able to provide those services. And I think that will be up to the department and the city to decide, but as President Garian already talked about and Dr. Poole talked about, we noticed that there was a need for this a year ago, and that's why we started this program. Despite having a lack of funding, the, you know, Dr. Poole and his group was able to provide those screenings to us at no cost.
Great. So there might be a couple more steps on this after we accept the grant, it looks like, but I look forward to doing that next week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I know on behalf of the city, the work that the men and women in the fire department, the leadership, Darren and you on the state level and Trevor for the local, it's safety, wages, and benefits. And safety is number one for a reason, I think, in my dealings over the years with firefighters in the state and the city, that it's not only the men and women in the fire department, but it's their families, the care for your members, people that are being paid by tax dollars. And this is an investment of a financial resource with the grant and some money from the city to care for firefighters and maybe certainly to prevent longer-term cancers and death. So I'll look forward to supporting this and appreciate the work you guys do in the city with the mayor's office to, to put the time and effort into recognizing the safety of firefighters. With Trevor, you mentioned the equipment that was bought. I think those are important things that certainly we recognize that it costs money to do these things, but this also is an investment into the safety of the men and women in the Omaha Fire Department. So thanks for what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
One public hearing can be held for items 67 and 68, ordinances to approve, professional services agreements with Rice Tech Global LLC and Flowbird Group for the Parks Garage Controls and Technology Systems Project.
Public hearings on items 67 and 68 are today. Proponents, please.
Ken Smith, Public Works, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items 69 through 98, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 6 to 0, meaning is adjourned at 3:48.